Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If I could ask Village Clerk Schmitke to take a roll call?
Yes, sir. Do I do the roll call first?
Yeah, no, roll call first and then we have to make a motion to let them in.
Okay, Trustee Barowski?
Here.
Trustee Kritzmeyer. Trustee Micho?
Here.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Here.
And Trustee Tanucci?
Here.
Okay, then I'd like to have a motion to let Trustee Kritzmeyer and Trustee O'Connor join the meeting remotely.
Someone.
All right, moved by Trustee O'Reilly, seconded by Trustee Micho, another roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor? Trustee Barowski?
Aye.
And Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
All right, you're in the meeting. Thank you. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which we stand, one nation, united. With every speech of justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone, welcome. Before I begin the agenda here, I just want to recognize that this is Denise Rosenquist's last meeting. Denise has been with us three years. She started as an intern, moved her, she was, upon graduation, she became the Director of Operations, recently became a Assistant Village Manager, and she's leaving to do something different. We just wanted to thank you for your service and good luck to you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks. There we go. All right, we'll move right into the agenda. Do you have a speech or anything you want to give us? Oh, okay. All right.
How about a dance routine? I didn't do that.
All right.
Vic can sing. Vic can sing.
I've heard.
If Vic sings, he can't sing.
Okay, so, all right, so we're gonna move right into the homeowners associations that are here tonight. Eric Rousher from the Fields of Long Grove is here. Eric, do you have anything that you want to share with the board? You're muted, by the way, too.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to join. And, you know, I logged in to see if, really to be supportive of my homeowners association, Fields of Long Grove, to see if any other residents had any questions. I think last month, we had a homeowners association at the restaurant, and I think we covered a lot of ground, so, to be honest, I just logged on to listen to the meeting, but you guys covered everything very, very well at the wood fire grill, I think it was, at 83 and Gilmore. So, you guys did a great job and it was very helpful. I shared everything with the homeowners. I think that what really made an impact was Village Engineer talking about the roads and how we can best address, we had just, it was great timing, because we just repaved our roads, and he gave us some great tips on how to preserve them for the long haul. So, for that, I thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you, first off, volunteering, and I also appreciated you attending, so I'm glad it was valuable to you.
Yep, thank you.
And thank you for being here tonight, too.
You're welcome.
All right, then, we'll just keep moving along here. Let's see, is anyone here from Highland Pines? Greg Chason? Are you here, or anyone from Highland Pines? All right, if not, I know Jay Griffiths is here from Country Club of States. Jay, do you have anything for the board?
Um, you know, not really anything new. I'm just gonna echo, I think it was just Eric that was speaking. Um, you know, it was a wonderful gathering of all the presidents, well, whatever that was, about a month ago, and there was certainly a lot of good information shared. The only thing I guess I'm gonna bring up again, and I do need to have a meeting with Greg on this, but two, probably, well, three things, really. The plantings are looking wonderful, so, again, you know, thank you guys for, and gals, for working with us to get that, you know, put through. There is an issue with a number of residents complaining about noise from the golf course early in the morning. I know I did bring that up with Greg, and I guess it's kind of on me. I never reached out again to just have a quick, kinda, sit down with Greg to talk about that issue, but that is, has been an ongoing concern for years, and there must be some changes, because they've started earlier now, this year, than in years past, and it's, you know, about six o'clock in the morning by me, so it's gotta be starting around 5:30 for folks on the first hole. So, that's one issue, probably not really something to talk about during this meeting, but that's just, you know, one thing that I've heard from my residents. And then, of course, the other issue, the big issue that affects us, is the proposed chokers on Shafer, pardon me, on Checker, east of Shafer. So, you know, that's still an ongoing issue, and I guess, again, probably not something that really is necessary to talk about now, but those are really the two big issues that are in the room on my, or, you know, for me to discuss with my residents.
So, I'll let you work with the golf course noise with Greg. The next, the next meeting, we're gonna have the Checker choker, if you will, for lack of a better way of putting it, on the agenda to discuss, so.
Yeah, that's what I figured, so I, you know, neither thing I have is really, probably something appropriate to talk about tonight.
No, I appreciate you joining the meeting, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Do you have anything else that you want to share?
Uh, nothing, nothing at the moment that rises to the occasion, so I'm just gonna mute myself and lurk, and I'll add comments as I deem necessary or appropriate.
All right, Jay, thanks for your service, and thanks for joining tonight.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. All right, one more HOA tonight. It's Bill Handel from Woods End. Bill, are you here? All right, I take that as a no. Next item on the agenda is the public safety report. We have Sergeant Ryan Amber here from the Lake County Sheriff's Office. Do you have anything to share with us tonight?
I have one thing, but just one. So, June 4th, so the third day of the fourth, sometime between 2:00 and 3:00 AM, there was a vehicle that was taken from a home on Birdside Court. I don't know all the details about it, but it appears it may have been somebody younger who got home late that evening, was visiting the home in Long Grove, I think they're from Long Grove. Parked the car in the driveway in Long Grove, went back outside sometime around, little after 3:00, and noticed the car was gone. He was in the car. And about 45 minutes later, Lindenhurst PD had called in that they had recovered a crashed vehicle, and their town was no occupants, and the car was recovered in Lindenhurst. So, there was some ring footage possibly available from one of the neighbors, so they were working on trying to get that, and I think the actual homeowner had a system that was not set up to actually record. The only incident, though, appears to be isolated. We haven't had any Ashes done, we haven't had any new car burglaries or anything like that in the area, but now the summer's here, we'll just be prepared for the usual juvenile hijinks again. Is there anything new about the tunnel? Have you got?
No. It seemed to be good.
Okay, that's good. So, you know, hopefully the hot weather doesn't keep some of these people inside, but the kids are gonna start to get restless and just call it, they'll come and shag them out or wherever, and, you know, chase them around a little bit, scare them into the mother and dad. I do have a question, though. What ever happened with the old fee-up industries? Is that reoccupied now?
They're...
Or is it fixed up?
No, it's not occupied, it's not fixed up. There's been discussion about development on it, and through several conversations, but the property owner hasn't come forward with any.
Do you have a security working on site?
He did, I'm not sure he does anymore.
Okay.
We know there is some cases of vandalism over there.
Yeah, we used to have a lot, a couple years back, but I haven't heard anything, so if it's not, if you guys can find out if there is security on site, let me know. If not, I'll make sure to head to the National Control. Is there any gates over there?
Yes.
There is a gate, but I don't think they have a security anymore.
But I think the problem before was the kids were coming through onto the property, they were walking in or taking their bikes.
Yep.
Okay.
And they started cleaning up the property, too, so it'd be a shame for it to get damaged again, you know?
Yeah, for sure. It's a big building.
It is.
It is.
We've all toured it.
And the, any new updates on the proposed gun range? Is it going?
It's going before the Planning Commission's Zoning Board of Appeals on July 19th.
Okay.
So, that'll be the first hearing. We're trying to see what the venue's gonna be for it. We're looking for something that can accommodate, you know, as many citizens that want to come, so, place to be determined, but the date is set.
Okay. If you guys need any info for the area, just let me know.
Appreciate it, Ryan.
We know where to find you.
We do?
Yes.
Be honest, anyway.
All right, thanks for being here tonight, I appreciate it, yes.
All right.
Pleasure seeing you in person, too, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You as well. Go ahead, you have anything to say?
All right, just have a good night.
All right. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody virtually or in person that has comment tonight?
Hi.
Hi, one second, George. Yeah, go ahead, it's, who's speaking?
Anthony.
Hey, Anthony, what do you have to share with us?
Hi, so, I'm in East Ravinia, and in my area, I'm restricted to only getting cedar shakes for the tiles on my roof. And right now, the cost of cedar shakes has tripled since before, and are also kinda rare, to the point where the people I'm talking to are saying that, you know, they're struggling to find any, and when they do, it's extremely well-priced, even more than, like, imitation cedar, which lasts longer, and normally would be double the price of cedar. Aside from that, around the neighborhood, I see a lot of people have regular shingles, so I was just wondering, can I get regular shingles, or what's happening with that? Because it's insanely expensive getting cedar shakes now.
Yeah, no, absolutely, so, and, yeah, I, as a former HOA president, I had to deal with a lot of these issues, and I believe, have you talked to your HOA yet on this, on what they would allow?
I talked to them, I called them on the phone, and they said, like, only cedar shakes.
That would not be a village requirement. That would be a requirement of the HOA, I presume.
The village does not mandate cedar shakes.
So, I don't, you know, that would be one that take, if you, you know, I don't know if I would put it in writing to the, do you have a management company, too?
Yeah.
Because I would start there with documenting what, you know, what the issue is, and even showing what you're gonna replace them with. I'm sure they'll look nice, right? So, they'll be a different, you know, color or whatever, I don't know, you know, what you're, you know, looking at, but...
Yeah, we're with, let's see, we're with Property Specialists Incorporated on behalf of Ravinia.
Yeah, I would probably get a note to them, and ask that they take that to the board and give them as much information as possible. They, I don't know if you have an alterations and additions form, or something that you can submit that details it all, but that's what we do in our HOA.
Okay, all right, I'll try that, thank you.
Thank you. George, you had a comment?
I attended the Vernon Township meeting last Thursday night, and the assessor gave us a report, and in the report, he noted that because of the vacancy and lack of tenants in commercial office buildings, assessed valuation goes down significantly, and that will be impacting the assessed valuation for the community, all over the community, and especially for the tax levy that the schools require. In addition to this, the Village of Lincolnshire is considering rezoning a section of their vacant property, so that light industrial will not be used for other purposes, but it would be restricted to just normal office-type structures. And the assessor said, he was very concerned with this change, because as you can see, all the vacancies we have with office structures, there'll be no demand, and so there will not be any developments such as light commercial and warehouses that really bring a noise. So, that really is gonna affect all of us, even here in Long Grove and other parts of the township, when it comes to our taxes, and he estimated a little over $100 a year increase in taxes if things get changed. I wanted to get more details from him, but he left town for vacation. But that's just my, my summary, you know, you think of our community, they affect the residents here, but adjoining communities have significant impact on this because of the large percentage of where our real estate taxes come from, requirements of the schools.
Yeah, George, thanks for sharing that, you know, and we're kinda split between three townships, too, so that gets it more interesting, so, you know, the way we're set up here in Long Grove, but thank you for sharing.
That's just Vernon Township, but I would expect Eli Township is going through the same changes with vacancies, but I think Eli has quite a bit of commercial space, industrial space going.
Yeah, and still in use, right, yeah. I happen to work in Lincolnshire, so I know those buildings are vacant.
Yes.
We're in there, I'm in there every day, but we're trying to get people to come back, but I do walk around sometimes, and just walk outside, and you see that there's no cars parked in front of a lot of these buildings. They haven't returned to the office yet, yeah. So, thanks for sharing, George.
You have a hand up on the screen, Bill.
Eric, yes?
Can you hear me?
I can.
So, I'd like to maybe help out the other individual in regards to the cedar shake. Fields of Long Grove, some of our residents have expressed the same concern about the rising price of cedar, so a few of us board members did a tour of different subdivisions, looking at the DaVinci shingles, and given the, what we saw, we did, our homeowners association did approve the DaVinci shingles, and I have to tell you, I don't know what the cost is from the homeowners, they say it was a little bit less now than the cedar, but as far as, you know, the look, you cannot tell the difference between a cedar and DaVinci, so if that's any help, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
And if, Anthony, if you want to reach out to the village manager, myself, we can make whatever connection, you know, with Eric as well, to help out your HOA if appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, I, we, you know, we went through a little bit of a study, and we all agreed it's the right thing to do, what several of our homeowners said, hey, we'd like to look at it, we approved it. And...
Yeah, I'm gonna try to see if I can get some sort of, like, form for diverting from, diverting from the requirements, but I gotta, I don't know, I got pretty shut down by the property specialist last time, but I'm gonna try again, and then after that, I'll reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. All right, any other public comment?
There was one submitted by email.
Oh, sure, what was that?
It was in regards to the upcoming summer event, and it was submitted by Jennifer and, I'm gonna classify, Jennifer and...
Jennifer Holder, and Holder Steel.
And that was, did we post that anywhere?
It's on, it's on the website.
So, we posted that on our website, so, thank you.
Didn't we all get that, yeah?
Yes.
I didn't, so, you sent me a copy of it.
Right.
Yeah, it didn't come to me.
Yeah, no, it came, yeah, it came in the village hall, and I sent it out to the trustees and, yeah.
Okay. Any other public comment? Sarah Rubin, I think, yes?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I just joined into the meeting, because I haven't been to a meeting in a long time, so I thought I'd join and see what's going on. I was on my homeowners board for many years at the preserves of Long Grove, and we also have PSI as our management company, and about a year ago, I got off the board, but we made a change just last year, and we do allow alternative roofs. So, I don't know, you know, if there's any connection there I can help you make with PSI and how we went about it, but we did have to vote on this aboard.
Sarah, thanks for sharing it, yeah.
I just wanted to add that, and then I just wanted to say, I just wanted to see what was happening in Long Grove these days. It's been a while since I've been at a meeting.
Well, thanks for being here. Tony or Anthony, does that help you?
Uh, yeah, because, I mean, I only have the number for, the regular number for PSI. If there's someone specific that I can talk to, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah, you got your hand up again, yeah.
Dan Grant is our, was our contact person, and I don't know if that's the same person for your association.
You have to remember that the management companies work for the HOA. They don't make the rules, they only enforce them. So, the people who can make the change are the people in your community, they can vote on it, but it's not, it's not up to the property manager.
No, usually the property manager is the conduit to get to the HOA board, so that's, usually that's your starting point, so.
And I have a question. Are we gonna discuss Holder's email now or later during the permit?
We generally, Vic, correct me if I'm wrong, we generally...
A public comment is usually for discussion, it's usually just for the record, sharing of the information.
Okay, so we'll wait till it comes up on the agenda.
People write something, do they know that? Do they know that we're not gonna talk about anything that they've said?
They, no, I don't think they do. I think they know that we would turn around and present it to the board for their, for their review and information.
I don't see any arming in discussing the context with which the letter was written. If Rita has a point on it, I'd be interested in what she thinks.
Well, we're in public comment, so Rita, what do you want to talk about there?
Well, the issue of noise and loud music is, I think it's been brought up before the board almost as many times as Checker Road. It's, I don't know which one gets the lead, but I would, I would like to suggest that we control the noise levels better than we have, so that people, the residents in the nearby community aren't subjected to overly loud music four to five days a week, evenings a week, as opposed to just what it used to be with the festivals. There has to be, there has to be a balance, there has to be a way to work this out, whether the tiki hut tent needs to be insulated, or the levels are just automatically lower. When you walk through downtown Arlington Heights and downtown Libertyville, sometimes you have three restaurants in a row, each of them is playing a different kind of music, but neither interferes with the other, because they're playing it at lower levels. I think we need, I think we need to help these people out, I think we need to do something, something that's effective. Maybe, maybe we need to turn this over to PCZBA, you know, and they can, and maybe Jeff could enter into the discussion with decibels and ordinances. Maybe we need a noise ordinance. I don't know the answer, but I can make several suggestions. I just, I would like it if we could make residents' lives easier rather than harder.
Thanks, Rita. Any other follow-up comments on that?
No, but I think, I think she makes a valid point, and I think it's interesting that we've got complaints about the golf course and north, and, of course, I have my train, so...
I'm closer to it than you, by the way, the train.
You're not as sensitive as I am.
Okay, maybe I'm not.
So, noise is all around us, and as Rita said, it's, it's, there has to be a medium, a half a medium somewhere that we can live with.
Thank you.
I find it disturbing that the, we are told one thing about the size of the speakers and the amps on the speakers, and a resident has to step forward and say, yeah, but that doesn't include the speakers that the band brings. You know, that's a horse of a different color, that's completely different. So, I don't know if, you know, we just didn't get full information, but I know that for people for whom this is, shall we say, not their kind of music or not their kind of noise, there's gotta be a way we can help them out, besides earplugs.
Rita, I have to agree with you. I found that speaker issue a little disconcerting, that we're living on the basis of what the owner is gonna provide, and then to find out, well, somebody else is bringing other speakers, kind of negating.
Correct. I, you know, at its, at worst, I call it not dealing in good faith. You know, it's not the whole...
Well, there may be an adequate explanation, and that's what I'm hoping we'll have later in the...
Is there someone here who'd like to speak?
Well, we're in public comment, so Jesse, go ahead, it's your opinion.
So, I just wanted to touch on it. Something I've been aware of over the last few weeks, obviously with Brothers Field pursuing the rezoning and the changes there, is the noise concern. Obviously, this has been a huge issue, and as Rita had mentioned, tiki, it becomes a concern, and tiki has become the default for all noise downtown, and it is not. We had several instances in the last week where the tiki was outplayed by multiple businesses in the downtown on any given Friday or Saturday, and we're only open Friday, Saturdays, and some Sundays. So, I just wanted to bring out there, I do have some documentation, some video. I think the sound issue that is sometimes directed towards Brothers Field and tiki individually is actually a much broader subject than it comes to the entire downtown, and I just want to make sure we address that as a whole, as opposed to a specific business. As you had mentioned, insulating the tiki part, I would suggest this has been directed at a specific business, but this is not a specific business. We have seen several allegations and several things that were said about our business that were both untrue, about our liquor license, about our certification, about our noise, and just want to make sure we fully vet these complaints to make sure they are true, and don't just give allegations focusing on one business as the issue in the downtown.
Jesse, thanks for your comments.
It sounds like we need to soundproof. Really, because if you're saying that sound is coming from other parties, I need to know who that is, and, in order to solve a problem, you have to know what the problem is, and if we don't know what the problem is, we're just carry on and continue.
And just to, I would understand and agree with that. I think the problem that we're running into is more of a bird's eye view, is that the downtown, as we've seen the struggle with over 35% vacancy for several years, and the businesses that are flourishing from people, and are the entertainment and food businesses, and we've shown that we've been able to grow and bring businesses in, there's multiple. So, I would almost answer that, the issue that we're running into is what is needed to bring the downtown business back to a thriving position is in conflict with a few residents that are the closest to it. I think that's the issue that we're really gonna have to solve at some point.
Well, maybe, maybe we can set up a time to get together to maybe brainstorm and find out how we can mitigate this. Nothing, nothing is perfect, and this, the solution or solutions are not going to be perfect, but we need, we need, excuse me, excuse me, we need something better than what we've got.
Is any business in conflict with other businesses?
What do you mean?
If this business is loud and this business is loud, is that a conflict?
We've not seen that too much, most of the businesses are pretty good. I can give you a real-life example. I can give you a real life example with Chatterbox. It is quite often we'll check our speaker music and then we'll walk over to his patio and make sure that once we get into his dining area, you can't hear our music anymore. We'll take a sound check from the tent down to the brewery to make sure that once we hit the brewery, you no longer hear the tent, now you hear the brewery music. So we have done some of those things. It's not a decibel weaker. But we do make sure that downtown, like I said, a lot of us businesses are in the same place. We're now invested in outdoor music, we've invested in outdoor patios. So we're all very concerned with making sure we all work together.
I'm going to keep us moving if we can at this point. We've got several items to go through. I'm going to conclude the public comment period at this point. Thank you, everyone. We're going to. So I'm going to actually give Rusty O'Reilly credit for the idea. And I'll give our new village manager credit for implementing it. But we're going to try something new.
Only took five years.
Just saying, huh? So the next part of this meeting is new to the village board, but it's a well established procedure. Thank you, Vic, for these comments, used by public bodies throughout the state. The village board tonight includes a consent agenda, which allows for the village board to act on a series of actions that are either routine or non controversial simultaneously. We are trying the consent agenda in hope that it may allow the village board to handle its business more efficiently and thereby give the village board the chance to give more attention to other matters that need it. So you have before you tonight a set of items that are that have been tagged as consent items. And I believe what we would be looking for is a motion to approve them as is, or if there's anything that needs to be polled or wants to be polled to talk about, somebody needs to bring that up now.
If I may, after five years, the least we could do is do it right. And I think it's terribly important that our audience, that our residents, our citizens, our public knows that they have as much ability to pull an item off of this consent agenda as I do. And it does not explain that in the in the agenda that that the public can pull an item off just as much as I can.
No, I'm not an expert on this, Vic, or another.
I think as a matter of policy, if the board wants to do that, it can. But under the Illinois Municipal Code, there is no ability for a member of the public to pull anything from the consent agenda. It is a village board action, not a.
So are you telling me that Joe Blow can walk in that door and not be able to discuss item 10?
Well, we have our public comment before the consent agenda. And so if someone wants to discuss something on the consent agenda, they have that opportunity. And they could also ask the board if it would remove something from the consent agenda.
Please let me talk about item 10 is what you think the public should do. I think the public should know that they have the ability to pull in an item off of this agenda. Otherwise, I would be opposed to even having that agenda.
So I suppose the public, if they could request any of the trustees, right, or all the trustees, and then any of the trustees can request it be taken off the consent agenda.
What if everybody said no?
Question. What is?
So is this? Is this a community effort or is this a private party?
No beer, so that answers that question.
I'm sorry. We could bring beer. I lived with consent agenda for a lot of years. And Vic may well be within his domain of saying that the municipal code is blah, blah, blah. But the intent in my mind is that our public should be as able as anyone else to discuss anything within the village. It should not be. It's like someone said, who was on the Zoom, thank you for letting me come. No, no, no. Thank you for coming. We don't. They don't need to thank us for being able to join our public meeting. So it's an attitude. It's either you believe in Americanism or you don't.
All right. So this is a policy. This is discussion, right?
I would like. I would like to make a quick comment to that, Bobby. I agree that I agree that a consent agenda is a good thing, and I have followed your lead for five years, thinking that this would make things smoother for the things that we do need to act on and do need to be in an open meeting. But in fact, are rather routine or can be consolidated because we've already discussed the background for it. I don't quite understand some of your thinking on having the public. This is the board elects us or the public elects us, and you've said this before. I think if it's a policy that you would like to propose for us to talk about, I'm all for it. But I feel you're getting a little. I feel that this is a good thing. And I don't think that we should just make it up on the fly without a little discussion on how to make policies around it.
Okay, then I could get around with it around the issue that I'm that I'm thinking about as far as the public. I would wish to withdraw item 1 through 16 for full discussion. And I'll do it every night. Everybody in the public always can can have have a voice in everything.
Let's figure out how to do this. That would be six through.
No, one through 16.
Only sixteen.
That would be the entire consent agenda.
Well, it starts at six, but yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong page.
To try to preserve the spirit of the consent agenda, could we ask if there are any comments of any of these items and then pull those out? And then separately figure out how we're going to handle this going forward?
That's a great idea. That's a great idea. That's the issue. But do you see the issue about the public? The public, they're not foreigners. They're part of us and need to be part of this board and 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 part of the discussion. So I like your idea.
Okay, so we're going to ask the public, is there anyone that wants an item pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, I do.
Okay, which one?
Item 11.
Okay. Item 11. Okay, Community Grant. Okay, anything else?
I would also ask for a discussion description of where you would put an item back into the agenda. I noticed that we don't have a past, future in the agenda, so I don't know where you put it. Do you put it at the beginning or at the end or in the middle?
Can we put it after we take the vote on the consent agenda?
No, I'm asking. No.
That's where I'd like to put it.
I think that's a complete format.
That's what I'd like to do.
And then whatever we say goes next in line.
In numeric order on the consent agenda, Jesse.
I had a question on 10, not necessarily to not move forward on the 90 day extension, but I did want to know where we're at in terms of the long term re quoting of that entire management process.
I'm working on the RFP. And then I want to have a somebody with an expertise take a look at it. I'm hoping that it'll be ready for public before this expires, the 90 day extension.
All right, with that, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items minus item 11? Moved by trustee Michu, second by trustee Tanucci. It's a roll call.
Trustee Micho?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Baroski?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Let's talk about item 11, consideration approval of the resolution amending the Long Grove Community Grant topic. Who wants to start the conversation?
I was I pulled it because I was surprised by the matching issues in. I don't recall the original had a matching element to it.
No, it was a straight 10,000 dollars.
Right, right. It was meant as a very simple allowance for whatever group may come our way that needed money to do a certain item that was good for the village. And now we've added matching as being a preference. I think we lost the spirit of the speed for them.
Oh, because it says right here at the very first sentence, right, community and a budget for community matching grants.
Well, and the preference would be given to matching funds.
I might be wrong here, Vic, but I think that's the consistent language with the previous one. What we tried to do on this was where our concern was, was in the managing grant. And our concern from a staff standpoint were the requirements to how that money could be spent.
Yes, I have no problem with that. I just the matching.
So the ordinance itself didn't change as much as the process requirement did.
That matching was in the previous?
Yeah.
As a preference, matching as a preference?
I'd ask Vic to check that the language was identical. The only thing I changed on that was the three things about operating expense going, you know, the three, how money could be spent. So.
What if you just take the word matching out?
That'd be great.
Anyone have any objections?
Well, so by not addressing the other side of that coin, does that mean that the somebody could have an idea about an event and not not have any skin in the game, so to speak, but ask for money from us to make it happen? Be they be they charitable, be they private, or be they, you know, a LLC or a corporation? Is that is that we're not saying, we're not specifically saying that, but it's not in here. And I tend to I tend to think that when we wrote that ordinance, it adhered to the spirit in which we created the piggy bank. And now, because it's inconvenient or because a myriad of reasons, we're going to change it. I have a problem with that. It seems like an autocracy. You know, it's like, is this good business? Is this something we should be doing?
We're being asked to change in order so that a grant can be awarded which benefits one business downtown, but not the others. By so doing, we're changing the spirit of the grant. We're also essentially inviting other businesses, hey, come get a piece of the pie. Brother Steel, the debt in the blue stuff this weekend cost 10,000 dollars according to their paperwork. They got a sponsor. They're selling food and drink to cover their costs. Conversely, the Symphony Orchestra and the brewery are getting money from us to fund their event as well as selling drink, a food, I don't know. Just on the face, doesn't seem fair. We're playing favorites. So we have a chance here to stop that, go back to how it was, go back to the spirit of the grant program in the first place and not play favorites and not pit businesses and organizations against each other. I think we should not change this ordinance.
All right, thanks, Kent. I'm going to go around the horn and get feedback from everyone. Trustee Micho?
I think Ken has a really good point. I don't like favoritism. I want to benefit as many businesses as possible. And I do have an issue with that. So I bet this isn't a pickle right now. So. I think the ordinance was written with good spirit and thoughtfully. I'm reluctant to change it.
So you're reluctant to change to accept the resolution with or without matching?
Oh, with, you know, I do think that I like that encourages people to also match. But I don't. I don't think it's a necessity. And I don't think when I read the ordinance, that you have to match. I just think it's maybe we prefer it. And I don't think that bothers me because we can choose to not match. Or, you know, they don't have to match. So that I don't have a problem.
Okay.
Just Mr. President, I pulled up the old ordinance or resolutions, 2018 R09, and matching is in the previous one.
Can you repeat that, Greg?
Yeah, he said he pulled up the old resolution and matching was in it. It's the same.
So is it as a preference?
Yes. Yes.
Like Bobby, I like Kent and Jenny. I don't really want to change the ordinance. It was intended to have small, I don't know, more volunteer type activity in the community rather than help fund business ventures. So I'm not supportive of changing it.
Okay, trustee Kritzmeyer?
I guess my point, I don't. I don't see it the same way. And we've had this discussion before. And I'm actually very concerned about the message that we send going back and forth and back and forth. I think that that will be a I'll call it, I think that will be a stain that will follow the reputation of this board for a very long time, the back and forth, back and forth. We already are trying to get out from some other difficult to do business with reputations that have been ears in the building. I think we had this discussion once, and I think that reverting back and back and forth and back and forth is not in our best interest. And I don't mean that as though this is about our people individual reputation. I mean, the village of Long Grove. I also think that the discussion about this particular event advantaging a particular business, I I think we're twisting the conversation to bend the views that we're trying to seek. There's a better, more concise way to say that. But I think I don't see it that way. I attended this event. I see this event as something that brings community together in a way that is in keeping with the personality of Long Grove. I think it brings people together in a way that is patriotic. I think that it is beneficial and honors that way. I absolutely would like to see that spread across many other businesses explicitly or coincidentally. But I just I think that going back and forth and back and forth, and we had this discussion once already, is a bad idea.
Can I ask a question of Vic? Can we do a one off?
Yes.
So I mean, so in other words, it sounds like everyone is not agreeable to change the policy. But can we make a one off exception? Because I agree with Ann, we cannot reneg on what we've already agreed to.
And I don't want to.
I think, in fact, the village board did approve the $7,500 grant for the orchestra for Fourth of July. So that's done. This doesn't affect it one way or the other. I think this was prepared sort of as a the second wave based on that decision. But the board isn't required to change it. That was, I think, the signal that was was coming from the last discussion.
Perhaps I misunderstood, but I thought the approval last time was subject to changing the ordinance.
The requirement, when my understanding of leaving of leaving the meeting was the requirement was for us in order for us to release the money was, and so we weren't violating the ordinance, was to change the ordinance.
Because the grant right now is in violation of the ordinance. We have to change the ordinance in order to give the grant.
Or make it a one time exception.
Yeah, I would note, this is not an ordinance. This is a policy on how we spend the money.
That's correct. It's a resolution with a policy.
And and the village board, in terms of expenditure of money, has the authority to to choose how to spend the money. Within this program, while the parameters are set out in the policy, the board always has the ability to veer from it because it is not, like an ordinance, which is intended to be a compulsory requirement unless and until you change it. This is a policy that that doesn't have that same rigidity.
So if we make the one time exception, you give $7,500, I think that's one business. And then tell the other businesses and other organizations, that's it. So one time, don't come asking for anything. What message is that sending?
That's when I bow out of this conversation.
Okay, but so but so for tonight, if there's no one willing to make a motion to approve. to approve this modification with or without matching, right?
Um, so.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Um, no, no, I don't want, I don't want to change it.
I, I should have left it on the consent agenda. I was in error.
Well, if you had, I would have removed it. I would have removed it.
Excuse me. I was in error in, in not realizing that matching was in the previous one, so I stand corrected.
Okay, so as-is, you've made a motion to approve this resolution with the matching.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is what we asked.
Moved by trustee O'Reilly.
I'd like to make a comment.
I'm sorry Rita?
I'd like to make a comment.
Uh, please.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Um, I just feel, I, I feel compelled to go on record saying that I, I do, I agree with Ann, and I agree with Kent. We, we set up an expectation. I, I really don't like that it was last minute. I really don't like that we were told, oh, you know, we're going to have a pet parade, and we're going to have a July 4th parade, and we're going to have so much more than that. So we said, oh, okay, you know, let's bring it up, you know, chew the cud, the next meeting. And at that meeting, the promise was made that, that, that Mike and/or his associate would check with LCSO to see if they would play for $7,500. We never got a response to that. And now, at least on the website, it says they're not charging for tickets, but I don't remember, tell me if I'm wrong, I don't remember noticing that this concert is at 7:00 PM on July 4th. I thought it was much earlier in the day. I don't know about your households, but at 7:00 PM on July 4th, we're usually where the fireworks are going to be. So I, I think this, I think it's a cluster. I, I'm disappointed with how it's unfolded. I do think we set up an expectation. I do agree that we can't say yes, then no, then yes, then no. That's bad form, it's bad business. I'm not happy with the way that this came, came to us, let's put it that way. And if there's a way that we can fulfill the offer of $7,500, then, okay, without, without changing the ordinance, I, I think we're on the hook for it. I, I don't like it, but I think we're on the hook for it.
Okay, thank you for that. We have a motion by trustee O'Reilly. Does anybody want to second it?
Second.
Okay, it's seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer. That's a roll call.
Can we, can we clarify what we're actually voting on?
To pass, to pass the resolution as-is that was in the consent agenda.
Does that impact the $7,500 grant? This is just maintaining the ordinance or changing the ordinance?
Changing the ordinance, right. Changing the policy, changing the policy.
The policy.
So we're voting to change the policy?
Correct.
How is that any different, what we were discussing?
Um, it's just that it was suggested that it was in the village code that you couldn't do it. In fact, we've already approved the $7,500. We don't have to change the policy to give that $7,500 for the concert.
Okay, so we do not have to change the written policy?
Correct. Correct, that's what Vic told us, yes.
Thank you, okay.
We don't have to change the policy, but we're voting to change the policy.
It, it was.
So we're over voting, huh?
That's correct, yes. It's that simple. So, it was, it was seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer, right? And it's a roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
No.
Trustee Micho?
No.
Trustee O'Connor?
No.
Rita?
Can you hear?
No.
I'm not muted. Do you need me to speak louder?
Yeah, did you say no?
I did.
Okay.
And trustee Tanucci?
No.
Okay, it does not pass. So, but, the donation stands, right, for the concert, so.
I, I need, I need a point of clarification for staff's purposes than I am to, as, as we get additional requests for community grants, then we would fall back on the previous policy where it cannot be used for, okay.
All right, let's keep moving along. The, so I have a, I have a, we have the Midwest Sustainability Group here. Does anyone object if we pull that up? Or Barbara, are you able to stay for a little bit?
No.
Okay, then we'll just, we'll keep the regularly scheduled program. The, the next item is the Village Planners Report. Greg, are you going to give that update, or?
Yes.
I, I have it printed out, if that helps. Give better notes than me?
Probably not.
Okay.
Um, the 2727 Route 53 went before the Planning Commission's only appeals. They're asking for an extension on the temporary use. The recommendation or the discussion I had with the property owner's representative was an eight-month extension, or I'm sorry, an 18-month extension, and that, to bring that forward, the Planning Commission is returning a recommendation to the Village Board for a 36-month extension. That'll be at the next board meeting for the board's decision. We have a conservation, first one in a long time, Conservation Senate Quarter Committee meeting on June 15th regarding property at Lake Eonora Estates. The Architectural Commission is convening on the 20th to discuss signage for the sushi place that existed over at Sunset Grove is now changing their name and their business model. They will not be serving alcohol at that location, though it's the same owners. And, 235 Robert Parker Coffin Road, Joni's Pizza, the petition to, for a special use permit was withdrawn, and the AC made, the Architectural Commission made some recommendations on keep rentals, that's a storage place that's going at Lake Cook and 53. They're making those corrections, and they're hoping to get in front of the PCZPA.
Oh yeah, and I had, I have a comment on here. I learned a new word, fenestration.
That's one of those big planner words. We don't use those.
So it's the arrangement of windows and doors on the elevation of a building, so. Do you guys see that?
What's the word?
Fenestration, it's F-E-N-E-S-T-R-A-T-I-O-N.
It's tough, doesn't it?
So that was in there, because that was one of the recommendations, to, I guess, get it to match the monards a little bit more, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, fenestration, so. Vocabulary word of the day. All right, thank you for that report, I appreciate it. Any questions? Then we're going to.
Any related requests, if possible?
Sure.
With everybody's concurring, can we turn the temperature up in here?
Oh, shocked, why? It's so freezing, I'm shivering.
Actually feels good now, because I got a jacket on. All right, so with, motion to turn the temperature up, what, to second that?
I disagree.
All right, decline. Village Attorney Perry's report, Village Attorney Perry's report, Village Engineer Perry's report.
All right, thank you. So the engineer's report is in the board packet. Just wanted to point out that anything that's been updated since the May 10th board meeting has got the track changes on it, so that all of that's identified. I just wanted to comment on a couple of construction projects, but before I do that, and you probably can't see this, but it will get, get to Village Hall, that's the APWA Late Branch Project of the Year Award for the Covered Bridge, the abutment project that was received.
Want to try that again? You want to try that again?
Yeah, absolutely.
You can't speak, though, it's not, don't speak. Go ahead Jeff, talk, so to show.
All right, so this was received on June 2nd, so it's going to make its way to Village Hall to be prominently displayed. At the meeting on the 2nd, there was another award that they mentioned that won for the National Award. Unfortunately, it was not the Covered Bridge, but I was not told that the Covered Bridge did not win the National Award, so I take that for what it's worth, and maybe still hold out hope, but not that much. Just a couple updates on a couple of the construction projects. The 2022 Road Program, number four on the engineer's update, Arrow Road Construction finished the paving on Oak Grove Circle today, in Oak Grove Drive, so that was a little ahead of their schedule, so that completes the paving for this year, which is, which is wonderful news here sitting at June 14th. The other construction project.
Hey, Jeff, before we leave that, just dumb question, it was about a week and a half ago I drove around, so are they going to do any striping for stop sign bars or anything like that, or any striping?
Yeah, that comes, that comes next.
Okay, got it, so that's still to go, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And then the other item that I wanted to just touch on is number six. This is the county's forced main replacement project, and I wanted to comment on it because this impacts the pathway on Robert Parker Coffin Road and also the Archer parking lot. Spoke with the county today, and they are scheduled to complete the repaving of that asphalt that they removed on both the path and in the parking lot next week, which is great in anticipation for Strawberry Fest, so I just wanted to pass that along. Other, other than that, there's a lot of updates here, but I'm going to let the written report speak for itself, and if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
I'll go around the board here, any questions? No? All right. All right, we're going to keep moving then. Jeff, thank you. Do we need Jeff for the rest of the meeting, or can he depart?
There's nothing.
Is it okay if I let Jeff go?
Yeah.
All right, Jeff, you're free to, Rita, are you, do you have something?
I was, I was saying, goodnight Jeff.
Goodnight Jeff. Goodnight, young boy. Enjoy the rest of the meeting.
All right, thanks Jeff.
We will.
We will.
All right, so Barbara, the next item on the agenda is the Midwest Sustainability Group wanted to give us an update. Barbara Clip is here, who's the executive director. Thank you for joining us in person. Thank you, and I'm excited you have air conditioning, so. Um, couple things. I wanted to update you on our grant that we received and what's going on with the task force. Regarding task force, and I'm sure your president can tell you this as well, I think we're, we're close to reaching a consensus. The feeling is only maybe one more meeting and then vote. I don't know, I talked to some of the executives today, I don't know that the mayor's have really been heard. I don't know if she's still doing anything, we're around back from the Brack to the land plan, and when it went to the mayor's, it was a train wreck, and the whole thing fell apart because the mayor's in the corridor about to be integrated. So, and they were trying to avoid that, so they sent Google forms to all the mayors, so that Hopperham was on the line, Hopperham was in Great Lake. They sent them a Google form, said, where are you hoping to get out of the corridor, and what specific parcel are you interested in, what do you want to do with them? Hopperham was in Munderline, didn't even answer. So you all answered about your, your landing plan. Great Lake just said they wanted a path connection somewhere, that's, that's all we got. So I think, I'm hearing from you, that maybe the mayors wanted a little more input, so, but we are reaching consensus. I, my instincts tell me it's probably going to end up being a state park, and there's a number of reasons for that. The force, because they're, it's interested in a few of the parcels, but they don't have any money, I don't think it's a bad public, and of course it is, but they're out of money to take care of things right now, and they're not allowed by state law to go to referendum, ask for money to take care of things. They can go to referendum to buy new property, but not to take care of them. So they're out of money, so that really isn't an option. The only other option, other than a state park, which is, I won't say easy, nothing's easy in government, but a state park would mean, I, we would detach from the state administration, and literally IDOT could take the Strawberry Dome and do an interagency transfer to IDNR in the state, and it wouldn't even require a vote at General Assembly. Now, IDNR would eventually need more money to take care of the state park and all that, but that's, that's the status of that, that's why we all support that. The other reason, and I have to be careful that there's a public meeting, but if it's a state park, the political optics of IDOT ever trying to take that and turn it into a tollway, or the tollway taking that as a state park for a tollway, like it's never going to happen. They're never going to get away with taking a state park for a tollway. So, but their eminent domain powers, especially the tollway, are so strong, they can take, they could take your village off here. They did that to a couple villages, actually. I don't know if you followed that. Pardon me?
I'm sorry Barbara.
So, that's.
There's a, yeah, there's a line there, we're just going to leave it alone.
Oh, great, great. So they, that's, that's why.
I don't forget.
I asked, well, is that kind of weird looking state park, it's kind of a line, and they said, well, no, it serves out that way, and then when someone's farm becomes available to buy that, and, you know, over time, it becomes a bigger park, that's kind of what they're doing, but they act like a national wildlife refuge. So, and I'm sure there'll be some parcels, we're going to discuss some of that tonight, that certain villages will want to do certain things with, but at least particularly Long Grove and Munderline, I think, I don't know that Great Lake is seeking anything, and Hopperham was told that they don't want anything. So must that change, since we talked about which was over the winter? So that's, that's kind of an upsetting. Our position is that, so we spent the whole fall taking people out to do tours, I'm still doing private tours with people, and Tony had us, we did, we did kind of a tour at Top of Table, and the Randys had us, Tony Dean had us, and we brought the elected officials to like tour night dinner afterwards, and something like that. So I'm still leading private tours in the corridor, and we did that photo contest, really showcased what's at stake here. And then we, I was one task, but we were doing protocols, I don't know if you know much, you know about this, but it's open land series of, of Lake County Audubon, Friends of Indian Creek Wetlands, and then just some, Darco listen, did a presentation to the task force, and I did that presentation, and we were able to showcase all these beautiful photos of what's at stake here. And then we did a follow-up presentation on transportation to show how we could connect transportation to this, and that's what some of the other stuff comes up. In the grant, I had pledged to meet with elected officials in the other towns to find out where we stand. The villages of Great Lake, I have four, maybe now five, we just got a trustee, but he was just getting torn in, so I didn't want to, you know, beat his path to his door right away. But I think we have at least, I know we have four, we may have five, over the Great Lakes for protection. The mayor of Great Lake has told Senator Bush their final protection, in fact, he wants to stop the meeting, to just vote, he's, he's there. So that's done. Hopperham was told us from the beginning that they were going to support full protection. We went, I've met with several of the trustees in Munderline, I'm working my way around them. In fact, I went to their Village Board meeting after the last day with some people, some residents of Munderline to give public comment, ask them to support, and trying to ramp up a little pressure on that, and on the mayor to support us. And one of the trustees, trustee Russell, said to me, I, I brought up the fact that he may vote with us on a, they were asked by Ernesto two years ago to sign a letter in the 453. We all went to their Village Board meeting to ask them not to sign it, and he had voted with us at that time. But he's the only trustee that was still there, and he said, I was with you then, I'm with you now. So that means we have four Munderline trustees, six right now. I don't think the mayor's there yet, this is a public meeting, but we've had conversations with the mayor. We were meeting first with the trustees, and then we're going to work our way to meeting with the mayor and that, so. I, I personally wanted to ask each village that the village had to take it back and vote on it first, before they voted for it. I was upvoted on our own green corridor coalition, they didn't like that idea, because they felt a lot of Route 53 supporters can come and make this really controversial, and I completely think that would happen, but, you know, I'm a team player, so that's not what we're doing. So it's up to the villages themselves, I guess, to decide if they want to, if they want to take it up or not. Now we're moving in our, because Senator Bush said it could be just one more meeting and then maybe a vote, so we thought we had to be at the end of September before a vote, so suddenly we are in full what we call outreach mode, so we're, we're engaging the public now to pressure 53 Munderline, their elected officials to support this. Unfortunately, the Sierra Club's organizer, who was paid at a full-time job to be doing this outreach work, has long COVID, and he's been out, and he will be out, I think, through this whole period that we really need. Well, I'm doing my job and his job. I'm doing house parties, I'm just, we're tabling it fair. Our target now is the governor, because he's, he's ultimately going to be the one that will say a or nay to this. If IDOT makes a move to his property, which they're doing right now, and he agrees with them, it's just, we're over, we're done. So he is going. So, he is going-
Did you say who against IDOT is what?
Well, yeah, that's on my list here. IDOT, I forwarded the email to Greg and to President Jacob, IDOT initially, in January, gave a presentation at the task force, and they just went through the whole quarter and said, "Well, you could use this for transportation," and I'm paraphrasing.
Yeah, no, that's what they did do, they came through and said, "Well, you know, actually that was when I wrote the memo that our soccer field was owned by IDOT," which was not correct, right? So, and they were saying, you know, like, on certain roads, we could use for widening, we want to keep some of the land for that, but they've changed a little bit now, right? And they've come up with a new presentation that we didn't get to at the last meeting.
What did I say? But, there was an internal memo from IDOT to someone, I don't know, I-
No, we got it, we got it, it got sent to us.
You got it sent to you, okay.
Yeah, so I have it, I posted it in the board packet, too, it was, it's this.
Yeah, so there's my, you know what it reminds me of, I don't know how many of you are parents, but when your kid's out for their toys and they haven't played with it for a year, you go to give it to somebody else, and they say, "No, that's my favorite." That's not what I got reminded of, I mean, they had this tollway stop this project in 2019, they couldn't have been doing stuff like this land, they're making plans for it, it wasn't until we wanted to take it, I actually don't know how much I say we're in public meetings, so, they are trying to reclaim, yeah, they want your whole parcel that you wanted to develop, they want to turn it into future transportation projects and drainage, and I asked my friend Openland, who is an attorney that works on this, I said, "What does that mean?" She said, "Those big retention times," you know? And I said, "But the wetlands and the prairies are naturalists, better at it than digging a big hole and paying for it." So, I talked to Senator Bush, who is technically the co-chair, but she's really leading the task force with Representative Boss, and I said, "What's going on here? Why are they suddenly trying to take back all the land?" It's 28 parcels they want back, they want to keep, not back. And she said, "We're not gonna let that happen, that is not happening." And she said, and I, Kristen Missles was the deputy governor in charge of infrastructure, so he oversees IDOT, she said, "He's gonna hear about this." They wanted to present at the last task force meeting, they didn't, yes, so whether they're gonna, she said, "Presentations are done," she's not letting them re-present, they already had a presentation. They, this thing was voted on in June 1st or something last year, and they didn't present till January, they had plenty of time to come up with a plan, and for them to present, and then want to present six months later and change their plan and presentation, she's not happy with that. So that's the status of that. So we will be tabling at the state fair, we'll be collecting petitions for the governor, we'll be at some of your events, hopefully, the outdoor movies and stuff, we're gonna have volunteers out there collecting petitions for the governor. We'll be at the state fair, we usually get a lot of petitions signed at the state fair, we're having house parties, we had one at Tony Dean's house where two people got voted. We're having house parties, we have a big event on June 27th in Great Lake at the Byron Colby Bar, that's bigger than a house party, but it's not exactly a town form, but a lot of the trustees are gonna be there, it's election time, it's the day before the election, so a lot of the elected officials are coming. So we're working as hard as we can on that, on that aspect of it. I wanted to talk to you about the parcels, can you show that map?
Yeah, that's what I-
Can we first show the big map, so they can get some context?
Yeah, so where in this, this?
The link I sent you to-
Was there a different link?
Yeah, I sent out the link to Greg.
Oh, you're talking about the-
The Openland map, just so they can kind of get the context of what's going on there.
Yeah, let me see if I can do this in a way where I don't show you, you sent me the email, right? Let me do something, I'm gonna cheat here for a second, just give me a second.
Well, while we're doing that, so this is the parcel at Midlothian and Route 63, and if you look at the whole quarter, ultimately, it falls out, you can look all that, that's because they were gonna have an interchange there for Route 53, that's why they own so much property there, a lot of that, if not all, at least a good portion of it is in Long Grove. IDOT, of course, is planning all of it, the Forests Reserve in their presentation said there was a couple parcels there they would have liked to add, but I think it's one, I don't know, that's-
What's the name of the email, what's the name of the email?
Well, we're not advocating for any one thing, but I talked to trustee Michelle and trustee O'Connor, and they both, the landing plan that was sent to me, actually shows you developing right through the center of the corridor, which I think President Jacob said you probably don't want to do now, and that landing plan, at least my understanding is, it was done before they even set Route 53. So, our questions to you are, and I'm gonna show you a transportation idea we have there, too, our questions to you are, in light of the fact that this might be a state park, would you want to change your landing plan? A, to have some of it as a park, or B, to have compatible economic development, like an in, I could jump to President Jacob, if this were a state park, you could get the state TNR to put an in there, and you could tax it-
What was the link?
You know, tax the road, and then you could add compatible things like shops and cafes and bike shops and outdoor gear sales, or things that were maybe more compatible with state parks. And I'll show you a transportation idea I presented to them, too, when we get to that point. So I guess we just wanted to discuss it, I know Rita wanted us to point out some of these possibilities, including possible transportation ones, and then just have you get back to us on what your thoughts are, so we know where to begin.
There's no link in the email, so, I mean, I have it, I have the link in my other PC, I don't have it this one here.
We can just go with, can you show the land, all your landing plans to that area?
Yeah, absolutely, I'll pull it out of the email, so let me just, yeah, let me do that, so.
I think everybody probably knows where it is. See, O'Connor and I went out there yesterday, I drove around, we started at this Diamond Lake Sports Complex there, that's on one edge of it, and we kind of went around.
Yeah, so let me, let me do, in this email, let me see if I can move this over.
I think we're watching a movie here.
You wanna watch a movie?
Oh, it's got like HBO Max up there.
Oh, geez. Of course, it just went right away, darn it. I just had it open, so, I wish I would, yeah, I wish I would have known that, I pulled, I thought I had what you wanted to present, so I organized it all, go folder.
The three things I wanted to show were your first landing plan-
Yep, 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 I'll get it back, so.
Well, the EJNE, and then the one I did, showing the parcels with where the EJNE is.
I got it right here, if you want me to send it to you. Well, if you have it handy, but I had it open, so I just need to get it back.
While we're doing that, I'll tell you some of the things, Linda Soto at Lake County Transportation Alliance, she's also our representative to PACE, she and I did a presentation on how we can have transportation connections throughout this state park or protected area, or whatever it ends up being, and they were already thinking of putting, at the northern end of the corridor is the Libertyville Freight Crossing train station by the landfill there, if you can picture that? So they're already thinking of putting a transit hub, as they call it there, because the two train lines, the North Central Line and Milwaukee North, both stop there, so what a transit hub would mean is, even or not, Pace doesn't always, their buses don't always stop where the trains stop there, which is unthinkable, and they don't coordinate with the trains either. So they would actually-
I actually have a slide and everything, you know what I mean, I could have told you.
And they would coordinate as well. We'd also have bike sharing, starting there, and then I had an idea, Tony Dean pointed out that way back when in your landing plan, you had a possible transit hub, well, not transit hub, a transation for possible passenger service on the EJNE. So I wanted to talk to you about that, and kind of where that stands with regional transportation agencies right now. So IDOT, well, gee, it'd be cool to have a transit hub on the northern end, a transit hub on the southern, and then we could do bike sharing in Mondeleine, in Long Grove, and then in Great Lake, so people could come here and get a bike, and they could ride the trail. And the trail, by the way, I bet that, the trail, by the way, would connect, the northern end in Mondeleine, it connects through Great Lake up into Liberty, the Splash River Trail. So this wouldn't just be a 12-mile trail, it would be like a 50-some mile trail, this could be a real attraction for people.
This is in our comp plan, this is like either sub-area one or four, I get confused which one it is, it might be one.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could overlay them, but those are the parcels that IDOT owns, I believe, unless any of that's-
Yeah, that's what they, they do own these parcels right here, so this is Midlothian Road up here, Route E3 is right here, there's a fire station up here, Walgreens, my cell division's right here, so.
So that red line is the EJNE.
EGNE railroad tracks, yeah.
So any of those parcels were on there, particularly the one supposed to Route 53.
Sub-area one that I have, yeah.
Possible bases. So here's the status of the EGNE, my colleague at Midwest Sustainability has been talking about passenger service on the EGNE for decades, and it was studied several times, the most recent time, I think, was 2008, and it is in CMAP unconstrained project list, should I explain what that means? I should, I think, I don't want to say it.
Is this the slide that you wanted to show, too? I tried to create a slide for you, too.
Yeah, the EGNE, so you can see, they call it Gilmer up there, but you can see where it comes right through here, on that line I showed you, that's where it comes. It would go around, it would connect up with Elgin, Aurora, Naperville, Schaumburg, Joliet, it is the wheel, so right now our metro trains all go like spoke into the hub of Chicago, but we don't have the connector around, the wheel around. This has been studied quite a bit for passenger service, I think what they're thinking now is maybe light railings, they're, and so I just wondered, do you all want, would you be interested in us helping to pursue a transit hub for you on that property? Not, you know, we have other things we can do, it's just most towns like to have transportation connections, but if you don't want-
So you would bump the stuff that's on the EGNE now?
No, I'm sure they would double track.
Oh, good.
No, it's already double tracked.
Then, yeah.
It already is double tracked, they parked, it is, so I know that well.
They park it near your house.
Yes, they park near my house, yeah.
I live by the train.
They hawk sometimes, too.
I live right by those freight stations, I'm very glad they have a roster street, actually. So I know what it's like having trains come by all the time, but the passenger trains are usually, you know, like eight car, it's not like the 10,000 long, pretty long trains that run, so.
There's so much freight on it now.
Yeah, so that's why it would have to be double tracked.
Yeah, and by the way, I, I, I would have known you wanted to do this, I could, I have a presentation that has all this in it, but this is our, our sub-area one that is contemplating, you know, residential going this way, preserving all the wetlands and everything, and then more commercial as you go towards the fire station and so forth, this is Midlothian Road, Route E3, Indian Creek Club is where, you know, down here, over here, so, if you can see that at all, that's kind of what the thinking was.
We have a transportation hub there, our station in the lower right, there's a little train station that was-
Right, that was, been on the books forever.
Forever, yeah.
Yeah, I guess it is still there, you're right, yeah, it's still there, yeah.
So, I mean, we've already had it in our comprehensive plan, but that's-
So that's something you were, you were interested in.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah.
Okay. And then, you can see where the corridor is on that map, you would have development going right through the center of the corridor, which was probably deliberate when they were still at Route 53, and that's still what you want.
Uh, no, I mean, I think that, I think what we've been saying all along is that, oh, internet connection's unstable, great, so hopefully it didn't lose anyone, is that we would like to see a green space through there, this may change our comprehensive plan, but this comprehensive plan was adopted before the task force was even set up, right?
Right, that's what we're seeking clarification.
Correct, I don't think the board's gonna object to having a green space through the middle of this.
It would be a north Long Grove.
And, yeah, and a pathway to get all the way down to south Long Grove, right? So, I mean, I don't think anyone has any objections, right? Tell me I'm wrong.
I'm not sure about the continuation of the hub that's there, I'm not sure, I don't have any idea what, I know what, why it was originally planned there, and it wasn't good intent that it was put there, but, but I don't know, I don't know where we would go with that.
It would, if you had a train stop there, it just means the buses would stop there, a transportation, a transit hub, there's a beautiful rendering that can send you from Pace, but in the summertime, they would have fountains and little picnic areas where people could-
And more traffic, and more roads, and-
I don't, I mean, I think it's public transit they're thinking of, like, so.
Yeah, but you gotta get the bus there, you have to have the road to get there and in-
Into the station, yeah.
So, I, I'm just skeptical.
Well, and I'm just gonna tell you that I don't see the probability of a train station getting there with all the freight trains that go through there, and I can tell you there, it's more than 25 a day.
Yeah.
And they park there, too, so.
And I can talk, I can talk about that in a second, but we don't need an answer on that today, we're just trying to seek clarification from you all about that landing plan, and if it would need to be changed, and if it is going to change, and what Long Grove is seeking here. So, IDOT wants those parcels, I don't know how that would play out, certainly they could just take them, and then you don't get anything, or it could be part of the negotiation on the task force, I don't-
So, so in this memo, by the way, it went to everyone on the task force, it says, "Multiple uses for that, our sub-area one that we were just looking at," it says, "They want to look at it, identify as having both current transportation use and future drainage use, provide constipatory floodplain storage to mitigate for any improvements in the wetlands." And then they're talking about, obviously, for ongoing Route 683 improvements, which is in Phase Two, they need part of it, that makes sense, they're also talking about giving a third of an acre to the Mondeleine Park District, mitigation impact, and so on, so near the Diamond Lake Sports Complex, but this is all new, that was never, that's all brand new since the last meeting. And this memo's in the board packet, so. And that kind of kills it, the whole sub-area is gone, then we wouldn't have any, no development there.
Yeah, but we, we don't own that land, IDOT owns it, we don't-
No, I know, I know, but the underlying zoning is ours, right? And so, the thing is, is, yeah, they own the land, right? So, but, I mean, obviously, the lesser of the evils is to have, you know, not have 53 there, whatever that might be, but ideally, what we would like to see is, our comprehensive plan follows, obviously with some modifications, wouldn't you agree?
Who, you speaking to me?
Yeah, I'm talking to Rita, yeah.
I agree on the, on the face of what you just said, I'm not sure that there's, there's a viable market right now for the offices that are called for in, on that schema, there's some token retail along 83, and then there are townhomes, if I'm not mistaken, I don't have it in front of me. And I think some of that could be creatively developed in such a manner, like, it could be a community center, it could be a conference center where weddings, corporate meetings, so on and so forth, with the trails around the wetland areas, small hotel, there's all kinds of things that could be really pretty, that we could advocate for, and would create some other. But the fact that we don't own it is scary, you know, they can hold, they can just withhold it and say, "We're gonna keep this."
Yeah, that's something I'm worried about, is that they'll do, Mr. Philpey and you and I, I mean, you're at the border, but they just had a bill, this General Assembly, the governor just signed it, on disposal of IDOT-owned property. If we decide that it's not gonna be state park, that park that IDOT owns, and they can just keep it, and they have eminent domain, they can take it from you even if you wanted it, but that will remove the FAP protection, right? So it's a federal corridor right now, so no, and you guys probably all know, nobody can sell or do anything in that corridor, and if you want to sell land in the corridor, then you have to get permission of IDOT, right of first approval and all that, so. So if we remove that protection from that area, anyway, even if IDOT didn't want it, it would just go to the highest bidder, probably, to IDOT, IDOT would sell it to them. So if you have developers ready to go, maybe they'd buy, I don't know how that would work. But right now it's protected and it can't be sold. So, that's something for us, for you all to figure out, in the negotiations with the task force, is how are you gonna keep IDOT from keeping that? Because we don't want IDOT to have it, because then it could be a tollway in the future.
So Barbara, I have a question for you, this task force, so far, all we've been doing is listening to presentation after presentation, if somebody could come back to us and say, and give us a little bit of time to digest it before a meeting, say, "Here's some proposed land uses, what do you approve of?" To give me time to go back to the board and say, prioritize A, B, and C, what would you like to see?
I can ask them, I'm sure you can, yeah.
Yeah, because we can't go, we can't walk into a meeting and say, "Okay, today we're gonna vote on-"
Yeah, no, they won't be able to.
You know what I mean?
Maybe the timeline was thinking, Jack Darren, who's the big environmental lobbyist in Springfield, said, "Some of the General Assembly members want to vote on this, it's an election coming up, you know how that goes." So, giving up the big state park will create and all that, so, if they want to vote and the governor needs to sign it, we want to do that during the veto session, which is right after the election this year, because Senator Bush will still be there, she's retiring, she won't be there in spring to help us with all this, and we need her leadership. If we're gonna do something in the veto session, we need a few weeks to draft the bill, and so, it would really- Um, if we're gonna do something in the veto session, we need a few weeks to draft the bill, and so, it would really need to be done by, first week of October, for sure. Um, by law, we don't like to be done by the end of the year, but if we need something voted on, we'd wanna do it in veto session, for sure, because we'll have her to advocate for it. So that's the timeline we're on, they're not sending down our next meeting till mid-July, um, because of the violent election and everything, I think. Um, so we'll have that meeting, and I think she was planning on a vote to subsequent meeting. So I think at that next meeting is when everyone will be saying what it is they want, I, I, I think there's broad, except for Monaline, there's broad agreement on protection. Except for I dot, I guess I should say, there's broad agreement on protection, we have to vote, you know, um, if we have to outvote them, we outvote them, but, um, we would like to bring everyone in, um, so that's, that's the timeline we're on, so if we did that, then you'd have time, hopefully at your August meeting, we can make sure everybody can take it to their boards in August, and then maybe we vote after that, and then we can still stay on that timeline.
Yeah, I want the feedback from the Long Grove Village Board, if these are the options being presented.
We'd like all the boards to be able to weigh in.
Yes, I'd like them to, to have a chance to weigh in, I, I don't wanna be the lone vote on my own, so.
Yeah, and how, you all need to strategize on how you wanna negotiate that, um.
I, I, I'm not understanding the negotiating. Phil is negotiating with whom?
On the task force, so he has a seat on the task force, there's like, what is it, there's 17 of us.
Yes.
I dot has a seat, Long Grove has a seat.
I understand that, but who's he negotiating with?
With the task force, we'll all be voting on a recommendation, and then I'll get put in a report and go back to the general assembly. So if a village wants something, and I dot wants something, and the forces are wanting to go real personal, then it has to be agreed to go on, or, or we'll have to have several plans, and then we all vote on them or something. I guess if they wanna have one plan that.
I don't think we know how it's gonna go down yet, I guess is what the issue is, so you're anticipating it's gonna be something like that, right? Okay.
I think basically, often with my understanding is there's good, what, how things stand, it's just you guys in Monaline that have interest here, so.
We use the largest set of parcels in the whole system there, right? The largest.
Well, they, they have a lot, but they're not really things they can really do anything with, it's like behind the line, so it's not. And it's really mostly wetlands, I think there's gonna, it's gonna end up, stormwater management wants to take that and do some wetland updates back there, I think basically supporters of that, for that to salvage, take that.
Rita's trying to say something.
I was, I was just gonna add, um, it's, it, it seems to me, when you look at the strategy that we, maybe, maybe one strategy of several we should is, I don't think we're gonna get many points or much support from I dot by saying, well, you know, Mr. I dot, um, you know, we need these revenues, we need what the retail bring in, you know, blah, blah, blah. I think, I think that if we, however, approach it from a community building standpoint, because in that location, we are, we are closer to Monaline than, than any other community. And there's, um, West Oak School, that's in that little triangle, uh, you've got the rec center, and, and you have, uh, Route 16, which is a huge bifurcation of neighborhoods. You know, if Johnny goes to school with Tommy, but they're on either sides of Route 16, it's pretty hard for Johnny to get to Tommy's house. But if we could make a case that we create a community center, maybe, uh, on, on this property, and we create trails from the school underneath, uh, Midlothian, over to the rec center, a, a, and, and we probably could coordinate this with their view of the overpass on 60 at the railroad tracks. Remember, it was like three, four years ago, we went to that presentation? You know, to me, i- if we, if we come from that stance, we, we might have a better opportunity of controlling that property than not. You know, Hawthorne Woods isn't gonna get land to put grocery stores on, Monaline's not gonna get it, Grays Lake isn't gonna get something like that. Um, I, I got's already talking about not selling all of it, so, usually when they do stuff like that, they get something up their sleeve. So, for whatever that's worth.
Well, of course, I dot reports to the general assembly and the governor, so if the general assembly and the governor tell them what it's gonna be, they don't, they don't get it today, right? But if, if you guys don't wanna stay parked, then, then what, then how are we gonna?
Well, we don't know that we don't wanna stay parked, because this is the first time somebody's said.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's make it a stay parked, right, so, I think that's what we gotta understand, is what would be the options that'll be thrown out there. Yeah, what's, right, absolutely, and then get everyone to say, hey, this is, this would be a good use, this would be the best use, this would be the second best use, whatever, right, obviously a highway, a stormwater management basin.
Well, they're talking about mitigation, um, and I'm, I'm kinda a beginner at mitigation, Mike Evans is the expert, and he's, he's out sailing or something. Um, you, there's a lot of things you can do in mitigation funds, George Rennie and Prairie Crossing got the underpass between Prairie Crossing and Old Opening with mitigation money. So, we said, hey, if you can do that, we can have underpasses under all the state highways, if this trail is gonna cross, we can use mitigation money for that. We can also use mitigation money to, to improve the wetlands that are already there, they're not all eight. So, I dot just wants to place, so when they're destroying wetlands, they can, you know, mitigate something and say they've got their mitigation credit. There's other ways they can do that within the corridor without taking your whole.
Are we at a good point to stop here? Um, do you have much else?
No, that was a lot, I, I.
Yeah, thank you.
Been here a while, and I just, I thought you all.
Thanks for being here in person, in person, thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Are we good? Yep?
If you have any questions for me, uh, while you're on, I'll get over to me, so I'm happy to answer.
Barbara, thank you for being here tonight, I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All right, um, I'm gonna keep us moving, we have, uh, a much more exciting item in the agenda, it's talking about a consideration, a resolution approving a service agreement with Image Tech for the office copier.
Uh, easy, easy to talk about, this was a project that Sheri worked on, Denise worked on. We were paying an exorbitant amount of money for our previous copying services, a significant amount of money, so we end up, uh, getting the same, and I would argue better service, and, from a, from a company that, uh, is a leader in the industry. The annual savings would be ninety-eight hundred dollars, and over the sixty-month contract, it'll be almost fifty thousand dollars, forty-nine thousand dollars on, on the savings. So, um, as I had mentioned in previous meetings, and we did with the budget, because the budget reflected some of these numbers, we're, we're trying to attack every contract we can to, uh, um, secure some greater savings, so it was good work by Denise and, and Sheri on this, and, uh, I would ask the board to, uh, approve the resolution.
So, okay.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Micho, roll call.
I mean, I, I'm, that's a serious question, I really truly don't know, I've not seen.
Oh, with the copiers now, they're like, uh, printers and everything, it's, it's.
The entire office.
It's the only printer you have in the office, so copier's probably a poor choice of words.
Okay, so it's scanner and.
Yeah, scanner, copy.
Yeah, yeah, it's not your typical old-fashioned copier.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all we have in our office.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a multi-function.
I understand, okay.
It's like.
Okay, we have a.
It's like having, having office deco in your office.
There you go, yep. All right, so, um, it was moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Micho, roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Oh, she had to leave, yes.
Um, trustee O'Connor.
Uh, we couldn't hear you, was that an I?
Hi.
Thank you. All right, motion carried, um, I'm gonna ask for help on the next item on the agenda, it's consideration of approval resolution, naming the covered bridge the Robert Parker Coffin Bridge. I don't know if that's Greg or Bobby that want to introduce this topic.
Oh, I have, have always wanted to have the bridge have a name, and, and it seems like, um, with the HDLGBA going to have their, um, celebration on the 23rd, that it would be timely to actually name the bridge for the person who created the structure, who is Robert Parker Coffin. And the request to change, to make the name, um, the Robert Parker Coffin Bridge.
What's the history on those words, created the structure, I'm not aware, I just don't know.
Uh, that, that he, he, he did not have anything to do with the substructure, but he, he designed and built the structure that is above the bridge.
Cover.
The cover. He did that in, I should know that.
It's in the seventies, right, 1973 or something?
Seventy-three, yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
I've got a picture of him the day.
I wasn't born.
That he.
Yeah, nice try.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I have a picture of him, uh, the day that, that they, um, opened the bridge.
So, and, and it gets called the Robert Parker Coffin Bridge, it gets called the Long Grove Bridge, so we would just name it the Robert Parker Coffin Bridge?
Yeah, and I would make a move to approve the resolution.
Okay, the, it was moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
Doesn't.
By trustee Micho?
More questions.
More questions, go ahead, Rita.
Doesn't say Robert Parker Coffin, it says Robert Parker Bridge. Am I crazy here?
Uh, the resolution itself?
Yeah.
Does Robert Parker Coffin Bridge?
It does, the, uh, the historic covered bridge is the Robert Parker Coffin Bridge. In the resolution.
Okay, so maybe this was changed, 'cause I looked at it earlier this week, and it's like they're cutting off the last name. Okay.
Maybe we need one of these new printers like we have here in the office.
My question.
What'd you say, Rita, I'm sorry, keep going.
Well, uh, it wasn't the printer, it was, um.
A copier, there you go.
Never mind, never mind, it's fine.
Yeah, never mind, forget it, if I'm not behaving, Rita, I'll behave myself, go ahead, Chris.
All right, I know it's a screw-up, um, but what other considerations were made in terms of other names or people that we could honor with that bridge? Not saying that this isn't a great recommendation, um, I sat on, around this table with Bob Coffin back in the day on the plant commission, and knew him personally, wonderful guy, but what other considerations, is this the only choice, or should we be, uh, thinking about other things or other people? Um, I mean, we've got a street named after Bob already, it's a pretty big honor, a, a real street, not an honorary sign, right? Um, should we be thinking about other choices, and, uh, what's our policy? Do we have a policy going forward in terms of other notable people, I keep thinking about Lee Bassett as an example of, you know, somebody who's always been dear and dear to my heart. But I'm just asking that general philosophical question, absolutely have no objection to this, I'll vote yes, 'cause again, I know, I know Bob, but the more I think about, like, how we got here and why we're saying it should be Bob's Bridge, I think it's kind of a question for me, I don't know what other else we thought about, or if there should've been other names that we considered.
Thanks for that point, I'll, I'll just ask, does anyone else have any comments?
Um, two.
Yes, it should be, maybe the park district can rename Buffalo Creek Park.
I think we personally should have a player piano in.
All right, go ahead, Rita, you had something?
Yeah, just in, in quick defense of my reading ability, the last sentence says staff recommendation, motion to approve the resolution names the covered bridge the Robert Parker Bridge, so that was where I saw it, so it's just a typo, it's no big deal.
Oh, that's in my report.
Oh, it's in, it's in Greg's report, oh, okay, pay no attention to Greg's report.
Okay.
If he had that new copier, that wouldn't have happened.
There you go.
All right, um, so, I, there's a live motion on the table, I would take a roll.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Is that a, a, aye, yes?
An aye.
Okay.
And trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Motion carried, thank you very much. Um, and then we're gonna keep moving along here, this is, uh, another, uh, item that might take some time, too, so Kent, or Greg, or both, wanna talk about discussion of. Remove and replacement permit fees and processes.
So at the, uh, board strategy meeting we had earlier this year, uh, all members of the board were interested in seeing us look at our permitting both processes and fees associated with those. Um, as I presented in the memorandum attached, uh, let me go back, uh, so myself and trustee Tanucci and Margarita Romanello, who is our, um, building commissioner, met and kind of stripped things apart and tried to figure out where we could find some savings, and we wanted the savings, um, to initially, uh, be felt by our residents. And, uh, so what we started to look at, and, let me make sure that we explain that, we continue, we're going to continue to look at other permitting as our first wave of this, is remove and replace, uh, items such as air conditioners, aluminum siding, or siding, roofs. Those make up forty-four percent of the permits that we do on an annual basis in the village. And so what we are, uh, looking to do is to go one hundred percent paperless on the permitting process. We, we know that there are gonna be one-offs, and people that cannot use computers, or we may have problems with that, so we'll be able to respond to those as one-offs, but we will, in essence, take away paper from this process, which will mean that, uh, input will be reduced by our staff, because it'll be done by somebody else. The document for permitting will be, uh, much simpler, uh, shorter in form. We will be reducing, uh, all permit fees by at least fifty dollars, um, for all the categories, and we will be increasing the number of inspections at no cost to, uh, the applicants for four out of the eight categories, um, where inspections, uh, where if they had one or two inspections or more, they would be charged for those inspections. What, uh, Margarita explained is that roofing tends to go in phases, and siding tends to go in phases, and window installation tends to go in phases, and because you have one inspection or two inspections, you may end up needing three, four, or five for one single project, uh, just because of the phases. And so we found that we would be able to adjust that and allow those inspections, uh, without additional charge. What we're asking the board this evening is to give staff the nod to start putting the, uh, protocols and processes in place, and to, uh, ultimately, or in, in addition, ask the village attorney to, uh, amend the fee code, uh, fee schedule in the village code, so we can reflect the reduction in costs.
Kent, you have anything to add to that, or?
That does it all.
Um.
So I'll, I'll just say, I, this does a few things, it makes it easier for the residents, because it's streamlined in the shorter form. Um, right now they have to fill in a, a form by hand. Um, our staff has to manually type in everything that's in the form, right now, this would eliminate that, so the staff can focus on more value-added activities instead of reentering data that somebody's done wrote. And this also reduces the cost of the permits by at least fifty dollars, in the case of furnace and air conditioner replacement. Um, looks like it's a reduction of, um, sixty dollars. I actually did always think it was odd, if, if you're doing AC and furnace together, you charge twice, I think it does make more sense to charge once rather than twice. So all in all, this helps the residents, it helps the staff, um, and streamline the whole process.
Questions, we'll just go around, Jenny?
Um, I, I'm all for it, um, I don't know if this is the right time to say this, but I would like to also, I, Greg and I have talked, um, a little bit about, um, trying to, um, encourage our residents to maybe do more environmentally friendly solutions, like tankless water heaters or high-efficiency furnaces, and if, while we're doing this process, if we could find any sort of solutions to maybe give a little bit of a permit credit for making more environmentally conscious choices, I would love for that also, but I'm a hundred percent.
And that's a great idea, I mean, and so my question is, what federal tax credits are still there, right? 'Cause they're out there, so that, so we could even just advertise what's there, make people aware.
For us two as a village, um, just, you know, even if it's ten dollars, uh, it's some sort of incentive for people to think twice about what sort of furnace or water heater they're gonna be putting in, or, um, just a thought.
No.
Well, there's something odd about, um, climate change, as it hailed three inches in Mexico City yesterday, but, um, and also, um, Officer James wrote this in the, the covered bridge about things that could be done, and I, and we're talking about sustainability and, um. about things that could be done and I, and we're talking about sustainability and, um, and I did research on the carbon footprint of Long Grove versus the other communities and we are off the charts on the high end. We're such a green city, um, I think forty-eight metric tons per year is average, we're at eighty-one point two. So, I'm thinking, what could we do to lower our carbon footprint and maybe making people aware that we are off the charts on that end and maybe making more thoughtful choices and incentivizing it would be something to make about.
Don't wanna spend too much time on that, but why are we double?
Um...
Is that, we're having a lot of issues here?
How is it with less people and, um, having to drive everywhere we go essentially is one of the two biggest contributors, but, um, just, I know this is totally taking this off in another direction, but we're talking about permit fees and if, while they're looking at this, if, I mean, if there are any thoughts on that?
So, we can look at that as a side concern?
I'm just gonna go around, Bobby?
Um, I, I, I like the idea of, of, of the environmentally friendly thing, but I hope that someday soon, we're going to get off this, um, this bent of, I should get money from you to make my footprint lighter. That every time somebody puts solar panels on, I'm paying for them to get money to do that and then they're gonna, well, I, I, I'm, I'm not gonna go any further because I've got a definite opinion about, um, uh, about money being given to you because you're preferred and yet it's taken from me. And, and, um, um, so I'm all for doing it, but I think you have to do it on your own and, and I think we need to remind people of, um, why it's a good thing to do and how to do it better. And when I read things about, uh, saving your plastic bags because you take them somewhere and they just put them in the landfill, they, they're a third party putting them in the landfill, so that defeats the purpose of, of my collecting bags year after year. So, uh, but as far as the permits are concerned, um, having just gotten a permit, uh, we just go, it's not a perfect system. It's just not. Um, I, I, I needed a tree permit for a unspecial tree. Our permit should be, I think, if you're not an oak and you're not a this and you're not a that, stop, you don't have to go any further. Because nobody's gonna inspect you, nobody's coming, um, and, and, and be done with it. And instead we have to fill out this form and I'm supposed to have paperwork. I don't have paperwork. I have a pic, I, I eventually did a picture to get my permit, um, and so it just was not a, a terribly, um...
Was that an ash tree?
No.
Okay. Because those, I mean, if they're diseased, take them down.
Oh, exactly, exactly, yeah, we took half dozen down like a, a couple of years ago.
Right.
Um, so, but I'm just saying, if, 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 if you're not one of these special guys, stop, you don't go any further because even, even the, the form said, now I have to schedule a, an inspection and then they come back and say, well, no, you don't need an inspection.
Yeah.
Just as long as we're not losing money.
Yep.
So, actually with that, I think we're charging five dollars?
Yeah, plus two down.
Unless, whatever, two or three dollars.
I think my neighbor said it was seven, but is it five?
Probably, um, Margarita uses a lot more than five dollars of her time to do that.
I know that, that's my point.
So, maybe we don't need to do that anymore.
Well, then, that's, that's my point.
My understa- my understanding was the board passed an ordinance because they were concerned about people, uh, just cutting trees down.
Mr. T, yes.
Mr. T.
So, so, and then, and then the response was to do this five dollar, so that way, you know, but...
It is actually seven dollars. It is.
So, I did get seven.
Seven dollars.
My neighbor told me it was seven, thank you.
You have to take one down, it's seven dollars.
Yep.
Right.
Oh, has that program, I'll, is it useful enough?
Well, I, I see the usefulness in case somebody doesn't realize that they've got an oak, shouldn't take it down. Or it's a healthy tree that's of an oak. But I don't know how you get there because you're asked what kind of a tree, so I'm telling you what it is, so who's gonna tell me it's not? Somebody that's common telling me that it's not. It's a, it's, it's, it's a circular, it's a circular program.
We're gonna spend a lot of time on that. Right, off the top of my head, could there be an online program where you go to apply for this tree permit and you check a box, what kind of tree it is and if it's the type of tree that doesn't need a permit, they just tell you online, stop?
Yes, 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 but there should also be, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what kind it is. That's a good point.
In which case then maybe they do need to apply for the permit and you figure...
Well, then, then you need someone to be able to, to, to look at it or send a picture or something, but I think you do need to know that I don't know what it is.
So, what, what I heard you say though is overall, if, if, if we're still able to cover our costs, this new online method, lower permit fees, you're supportive of, right?
With, without a doubt. I wanna tell you one more permit story.
Uh-oh.
And it was with a whole bunch of people and I got a yearbook about how bad we were. My point is, they were not being truthful. After checking with Greg and with Margarita was a whole different story. So, you, 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 when, when people complain about, uh, and permits, it's not always real lasting.
Right.
Chris?
Completely agree with you on the tree thing, it's crazy. So, if we could reform that, I, I'm wholeheartedly support that because I, as you guys know well, I wrestle my tree problems all the time. Um, and I think a lot of residents do and I think a lot of folks want to do that because people don't wanna screw with it. They don't want the other neighbor going, hey, he's cutting a tree down. That literally happened in my neighborhood with one neighbor's not gonna my door screaming that the other neighbor's cutting Buckthorne. And that, that literally happened, but anyway, so I completely agree with that. Okay, please proceed, thank you very much. Um, I'd like to have the ability to come back and kind of review the final schedule before we make it official, that we're good fee schedule. Uh, the city of Chicago charges seventy-five dollars per, um, inspection for replacement and repair in kind. To me, that's our bogey. If the city can do it with their inefficiencies, I think we should be able to hit that number somehow. I still think a hundred and ten bucks is better than a hundred and sixty. Um, I would love to be able at least meet the city of Chicago bogey and all of their efficiencies, so...
Of course, they tax people to jobs to help cover certain costs.
And they're all sort of bankrupt and, and others will be...
I understand that.
So, so again, you're saying you like the idea?
Yes.
And it's, we gotta look at the fees, can we do better?
I would like to look at the fees before we finalize the fees because I'm not sure if we had the chance to, to even discuss them. I mean, I looked at it, kind of read the PDF and I'm going, wow, well, how do we get, how do we get there? What's comparative to other communities? That do, that don't tax or do tax, I don't know what the right answer is, but maybe get at least just look at that comparison so we know.
Can bring those numbers back to you, sure.
And, uh, lastly, um, as we move forward, I, I mean, for something as simple as, as simple as a furnace, um, you know, the, the virtual inspection systems are out there too. I mean, take a picture, send them in and be done with it, right? I don't know why we're touching it really.
Bill, uh, President Jacob asked, uh, brought that to my attention and I started probing it a little bit with, uh, some of the inspectors to see what was required from state law, what, state code, what, what we could do, what couldn't do, couldn't do, what things could be virtually and that, so I'm still getting feedback on that.
Yeah, thanks, I think that's down the road of course, but it certainly...
It was Chris's idea by the way.
You told me that.
Actually, it's online. Um, the other thing is, uh, down the road, we need to talk about what that means for our staff in terms of opening up available resource and/or available time for Margarita, who's no longer handling paperwork.
Yep. Some opportunity to carry, absolutely.
Yeah, look forward to that discussion, thank you very much.
Okay, um, Rita, you have not spoken and you have to unmute to speak.
Okay, I just, I have one question. When does our contract with Mundeline terminate?
So, it's a year to year, I'm sorry, it's a year-to-year contract. We, uh, we did a, a ninety-day review because we were talking about, uh, uh, what we thought was fair, uh, pricing on the services we were getting, so it comes back up, I believe, again in July. I believe it was signed the first month I started with the board.
I see. So, is it possible that because of the cost of fuel, um, that there, they would have to raise their permit fees right after we drop ours?
I would, based on discussions I've had with their village administrator, I would hope not to see that.
Just curious.
Is that a plan or is that a hope?
That, that, that has been some previous discussion.
That hope's not a strategy.
But, the gas thing is a big thing.
Rita, anything else?
I just...
You like the idea?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's...
You like it, okay.
Yeah, it's a benefit to the residents and as long as we're not losing a ton of money, you know, why not? We, we doesn't need to be a profit center.
Yep.
We're not supposed to.
I don't wanna be a profit center. We pay for our staff with our taxes that we already pay. We don't need to put on, put money on top of that. I disagree with that statement.
No, she said she does that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's agreeing with you.
Hi, thank you, I agree.
Okay, so I think you have direction.
Let me get my hearing aid up.
I, I think you have direction.
Okay, very good.
All right, so more work needs to be done, but you have direction. Um, I'm gonna keep us moving if I can, if that's okay. We have the president, uh, and trustee reports, um, we kinda gave mine on fifty-three, we're good there. Trustee Broowski, do you have a report?
No, sir.
Uh, trustee Kritzmeyer is not here. Trustee Micho?
He's holding off on the, the, I guess, stuff until...
Yeah.
Okay. No report.
Okay, trustee O'Connor?
Uh, no report.
Uh, trustee O'Reilly?
Um, only, I, I made brief mention made of, um, the celebration on the twenty-third...
Of which month?
Of June.
Of June.
It's the Thursday before Strawberry Fest. I think, I'm not sure what time it's gonna be, whether it's gonna be six o'clock or seven o'clock, but it's going to be putting the, the, um, um, new ti- new, new, um, designation on the bridge, which, you know, we're two or three years late, um, doing again. And, 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 um, Ryan's gonna have to come home for, for about ten days, so I'm not sure how the other...
He's on, he's on here right now?
Oh, Ryan, speak up.
Ryan, can you hear us?
I, I can, I can. Uh, yeah, so we're, we're gonna have that, we also wanna be, the dedication, the first phase of the park is also complete, so if you guys haven't gone by, please go by, take a look. So, we wanna be able to show the, the residents and the businesses the, the new park as well as just how nice and cleaned up that area. So, the hope is, is that we, the road will be closed down already for preparation of the, um, the Strawberry Fest, so the goal is, is that since the road will be closed down, maybe we could do something at six, seven o'clock, do a quick celebration, let everyone see it and then everyone can kind of vacate and, or just enjoy the, the downtown.
We're, we're gonna have some kind of food or drink or something.
I, I will coordinate that, uh, today. I just, I've been out of the office, I had COVID and then I was at a conference for, for, uh, five days. I've been gone for...
What are we celebrating?
The, the celebration that we have completed the, the first phase of the park.
Okay, thank you, okay.
And, and then, it, it, one thing I'd, I'd like to mention before, I, I forget it, and that is, listening to the fifty-three thing, I'm wondering if, if there's some way we can prepare you to make a decision, be able to make a decision if you had to, without the consent and of the board? If, if, if we could have enough information ahead of time that would enable you to, to do that if you had to?
We need a workshop for that.
Oh, God.
I don't know if we're gonna have time for the...
Yes, that's true.
I don't know if we have time for the workshop right now, but, but I think that's something that, um, hey Rita, you hear that, Jenny, you hear that, you guys are, you know, you're putting some ideas out there, so, uh, let's, let's get those, you know, brought, brought up, written down or whatever, so we can share them with everyone.
So, it's, 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 I...
Couldn't get everybody together.
Yeah.
As, as she was talking, that there may come a, a point where you, you have to make a, a decision or a timely decision without getting board meetings.
Right. That's fair, it's a good idea, thank you for that thought, so, appreciate it. Um, trustee Tanucci?
I report with the permit side.
Okay, thank you. Village managers, the report.
Uh, just a couple of things, real quick. Um, Denise? Thank you. You, uh, you helped me through this transition of, uh, with, with the old minis- or old, uh, village manager and, uh, I appreciate your efforts and your work. The personnel manual that I have talked about, it is done. It is with the village attorney to look at the legalese on things affecting the sexual harassment requirements and things of that nature. The job descriptions are done. Um, I've given them the staff to take a first look at and, uh, we'll be discussing in the next week or so, um, the goals and performance objectives for the coming year. Uh, so that's complete. I will also wanted to make sure that, oh, uh, we will be touring Village, the Deer Park Village Hall this coming Thursday. Um, no, I'm sorry, it's next, is it this Thursday or next?
Next week.
Next Thursday, I'm sorry, I apologize. Next Thursday, they had one built, almost looks like a nice version of ours, um, and, uh, they had one built from the ground up like we had discussed, so, um, we'll take a look with their village manager and, and kind of get an assessment. It's four thousand square feet.
You, you just said...
It's the same day.
What?
The same day as the ceremony, June twenty-third?
Yes.
We may have a conflict.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I was just gonna go out, she, Beth McAndrews asked me, she said, why don't you come on out and take a look at our place, so...
You're thinking about building from scratch here?
Right, well, we talked about, about potentially doing it by the archer school and we all had that meeting and talked about doing that, so, uh, Jeff has done a, uh, a look for the septic field, um, which was a concern.
All right, I, I'm with Bobby on that one. I thought we talked about the septic field being over there, but not a building being over there.
No, we're, we're going to, we're, we're going to take a look to see what an architect did so we have an option in our pocket if we wanna do it. Not that we were building. The decision hasn't been made for that.
No, I, I didn't know about the building, that we were thinking about building over there.
Well, we had to, we had to look at doing something because of the septic field, because we don't, can't...
That, that's me too, I, I didn't know.
Okay.
I agree with you, I didn't know that either, yeah.
Okay.
So, we're looking at that as an option.
Okay, so...
And the, uh, one thing that I wanted to point out in the, from the treasurer's report is our, um, reserve remains strong, but as we're wrapping up, uh, the final accounting on accrual that come in for the end of the fiscal year, our revenues ended up sixteen percent above, um, budget and it'll probably be a bit more because we're still waiting for some revenues to come in that were behind the ball with the state and expenditures and almost all our invoices are wrapped up, we're seventeen percent below budget. So, that's some pretty good numbers for the, for the village to hang their hat on and a strong reserve again. So, that's all I have.
Any other questions? There's no reason for executive session tonight, I take it, right? Um, so I would be looking for a motion to adjourn. Who, by trustee Micho, seconded by?
Second.
Uh, trustee Tanucci, roll call please.
Trustee Micho. Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay.
So, trustee O'Connor. If you're ready, hi.
All right, good night everyone, thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Night.